Good evening and welcome. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting, our tentative budget and CIP adoption on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Michael Gonyan, followed by the Pledgeable Engines led by Sarah Messmer from Hospice of Havasu.
Thank you. If you would join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for your breath that you put in our lungs daily. I thank you for your sacrifice, your love, your grace, and your mercy for all I've fallen short to your glory, yet you still laid a path for us to be with you. Give us an understanding heart to discern between good and evil. Let us trust in you with all our hearts and do not let us lean on our understanding. We lean on your spirit to guide and lead us. Let us not be foolish, but understand what your will is. For your word and scripture is inspired by you and profitable for teaching, for proof, for correction, for training and righteousness, so that the men and women may be acquitted and equipped for every good work. Bless this meeting between the leaders and the citizens here of Lake Havasu City, Arizona. We come to you in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome there. If you please share a little bit about Hospice of Havasu?
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor Cameron Moses, council members and city staff and Lake Havasu City citizens. My name is Sarah Messmer and I am the community liaison at Hospice of Havasu. Hospice of Havasu is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit hospice agency proudly serving Lake Havasu City since 1982. Hospice of Havasu was the first hospice in Lake Havasu and we are still the only not-for-profit hospice serving Lake Havasu City and the Bullhead City area. Being not-for-profit gives Hospice of Havasu the opportunity to provide programs and services to the community at no cost. For example, some of the services we offer, you're able to provide hospice care regardless of insurance status or ability to pay. We offer the Transitions Program at no cost. The Transitions Program helps community members get connected with resources and services that they need as they start to age or their health starts to decline. We offer weekly grief support groups that are open to the community at no cost. Anyone can call us to learn more about hospice care, the Transitions Program, and grief support. Hospice of Havasu is a five-star rated hospice from Medicare's Care Compare data and we are the only five-star rated hospice in Mojave County. We also operate the Hospice of Havasu resale store, which is open seven days a week for your shopping pleasure. Our mission statement is to provide compassion and care with dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all that Hospice of Havasu does for our community. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell here, Michelle Lynn here, Jenny Koch here, Jim Dolan here, David Lane, Vice Mayor Cameron Moses, Mayor Cal Sheehy, thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch?
Motion.
Please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is our Correspondence Communications Petitions Announcements and the City Manager Report. Item 6.1 is our Fiscal Year 2023-24 Third Quarter Contracted Agency Reports. Chief Sterling has provided this in our packet for our review and it's available on our website. Item 6.2 is to announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city has several current and upcoming vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, one regular non-pilot member, and one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members and three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, three regular members. And Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular members and two alternate members. The deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office for consideration of these current and upcoming vacancies was Friday, May 30th, 2024. However, applications will continue to be accepted for any future vacancies and kept on file in the city clerk's office for one year. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. And it sounds like we have a lot of vacancies, but that's because July 1 starts our new year. So we actually have a lot of interest, 41 applicants so far for our Boards, Committees, and Commissions, and the council will be considering applicants at a future meeting. Item 6.3 is our City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As part of my City Manager Report, we heard some really great news. Chief, Fire Chief Pete Palapas, if you'd come to the podium? And could you share what you and your team were up to today?
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager. Today, this morning, we received a visit from the Department of Health Services Inspector to inspect our ambulances and they all passed. So at 16:30, which is 4:30, we officially received our certificate of necessity to begin ambulance transport within the city limits of Lake Havasu City. So I couldn't do this without the City Manager Knutson's guidance and leadership. He really tested me to make sure that this is the best fit for our community and it definitely is, and I couldn't do it with all of your support. This is a team effort and especially every city employee here in the community, this is for us. And the partnership with River Medical, allowing us to do this together, working for the best for our community. And I know sometimes it's just, I already had the frame and wanted to make sure I had it because this is proven 100% if you work hard at something that you believe in, and especially for our community, being a servant leader, it's so important that when you find something that is needed, that you stick with it and you believe in it and you show the information that this is all for the community and it's all for us to provide better levels of service. So again, I appreciate it. It's a historical moment here in Lake Havasu City for our city, our fire department, and our members that this program is going to be successful because we planned for it and we needed it. So again, thank you so much for giving this opportunity to present this.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Chief. When Mr. Knutson mentioned it to me this afternoon, I asked if you were driving the ambulance for the first call.
So if I can, I'm going to see if I can play this. This went over the tones, over the radios just a little bit ago. So let's see if I can get this over the microphone.
Lake Havasu City Fire Department would like to announce that we are officially certified by Arizona Department of Health Services for ambulance transport as C O N 159. We are excited about improving the service that both AMR and LHCFC provides to the communities of Lake Havasu. End of message.
Awesome. Thanks to Chief Palapas, all your hard work, all your effort for almost, what, about two years of nonstop conversations with AMR to identify that partnership and get us where we're at right here. And if I understand, a little after 5 o'clock was our first transport. So it just happened, yeah. So hard to top that, but I'm going to ask Ron Foggin, our Public Works Director, to join us at the podium. He has some updates on some ongoing projects and some projects that recently completed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Talk about a hard act to follow, but I'll do my very best. As Manager Knutson indicated, he asked if Public Works would brag about stuff that we've been doing. Happy to do that because we've been doing a lot of stuff. So just want to start by saying that our Lake Havasu City Public Works team, we have a great team doing great work for our community and we're really proud of all that they do every single day. The items that I'm going to share with you are really capital improvement items. The list of what we're doing on a day-to-day basis would take us all night to cover. But with that, I'd like to just cover a few of our recently completed projects. Our Site 6 Boat Launch Ramp turned out amazing and is very actively being used. We really rehabilitated wells 10 and 14, extremely important for our water system and our water supply. Daytona Wash, love these pictures, these drone shots really give you a feel for what an amazing project this was, this wash stabilization improvement project really ensures safety in our wash areas. Another wash project, a really amazing culvert project in what we call the Eldorado Wash. I'm like, the Elder Water Rush, water crossing improvements, really great. If you haven't seen it, it is a big project, really a great improvement to that street and that neighborhood. Our Mulberry Wastewater Treatment Plant Aeration Basin, this is a facility, of course, that gets 24-hour, 365 use and that bridge, that blue bridge is constantly turning and the plate that sits on top of it is crucial. This project put that steel plate on top to ensure that it continued to run the way it should. Are very proud of our Island Path Asphalt Replacement Project. That was a three-and-a-half-mile asphalt and parking lot improvement project on the island. Our Vados Zone Well 8 Project was completed very recently. That helps us take care of our affluent, our out-of-the-backside of our sewer plant. Our Annual Chip and Fog Seal Street Maintenance Program, successful again this year with multiple streets being maintained. Our Downtown HA5 Seal Project, this project introduced HA5 to the community and I'd say with great success and looking forward to doing more streets in the future, maintaining and making, helping the streets last much longer, protecting the asphalt. And then I just, I wanted to brag on our Public Works Maintenance folks. This is our Address Monument sign out in front of our Public Works Building, just really proud of all that they do and the amazing work that they do. So I wanted to just give them a shout out. It's beautiful, really makes our address stand out and we're proud of it. Projects that were currently under construction, so these are things that are currently happening. Out at the airport, we're doing the below-grade fire hydrant project, replacing the above-grade with below-grade so that they won't be damaged by airplanes. Odor Control Replacement at our Mulberry and North Regional Treatment Facilities, these we're going, we're moving from chemical scrubbers to biological scrubbers, huge cost savings and more effective way of treating odor. There's currently a video that was just done by one of our sewer employees talking about this project. We're going to experience a little bit of odor for the next couple of weeks and then the new biological scrubber will be in place and that won't be a problem. Our City Core Pavement and Water Main Project is currently underway, this putting new pavement and replacing water lines in the city core. Our Police Facility Rehab Phase 1 is currently going on right now, some major improvements to the police facility, particularly with regards to our jail. Our jail cell improvement program is really important, obviously, to the safety of everybody involved in the facility. Our upcoming projects, just to name a few, because there's a whole bunch still coming our way. The Grand Island Path Rehabilitation Project will happen shortly. We have our Horizontal Collector Well Rehabilitation Phase 1. This is resizing our pumps and reconfiguring and replacing well distribution pipes. Our Weather Observation System Project out at the airport, this is key to people flying into our area to understand what's happening weather-wise in, at the airport. Our Catalyst Park Construction Project, I have this listed as upcoming. If I gave this report tomorrow, it would be in progress because we're scheduled to move, start moving dirt tomorrow on this project and excited to get this project moving for our downtown and the green space and open space that will provide. We have a site just right around the corner from this facility that is, will be a city fueling facility, something that we've been working on and should start in the next couple of months on that. And then our second bridge design, we've talked about that because we've been in the feasibility process, but as of today, we are now advertising for the design work. So that's out on the street and we have engineering firms that are really excited. Phone's been ringing, people asking questions, and so we're encouraged by the number of people that are interested in that project. And that's what I have for you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. A lot going on, so that's the theme. I was worried about that presentation being about an hour and a half just with everything that's happening. So thank you, Mr. Foggin, and all the efforts that are happening there. Continuation of thanks and congratulations associated with receiving our C of N Battalion Chief Tim Mabel. He's earned the Emergency Medical Care Technician of the Year Award for the Western Region. This is an award that is, that comes from the Arizona State Department of Health Services. This program recognizes one outstanding medical care technician from each region who's gone above and beyond to serve their community. So we're very, very proud of Battalion Chief Tim Mabel. Over the past 20 years of his career with Lake Havasu City, Tim has led by example through managing various initiatives, through fire department training programs and community outreach with life-saving education. Most notably, Tim played an instrumental role in navigating the city through the Arizona Department of Health Services C O N process to implement a medical transport program for our community, and we're realizing the benefits of that this evening. Well deserved, sir. We're very, very proud of all your efforts and grateful for your service to our residents. Like to thank everybody that came out for the Island Path ribbon cutting we had just about two weeks ago. For those that don't know, that path was originally constructed in 1996, so well overdue for the construction and the improvements that took place in the last couple of months. This is a collaborative effort that took place with Public Works and with our Parks and Recreation employees. So thank you to all that participated there. Nearly 30 years later, we continue to work together to enhance the project to enrich our outdoor spaces and encourage recreation. Some final touches that are yet to come is, well, we did the seal coat that's happening. We'll have some surface markings, some more tree planting and irrigation improvements that'll be occurring within the next month or so. So thanks again to Public Works and Park staff for all of their outstanding work. The city celebrates the 25th anniversary of Kinderswim Program. Councilmember Dave Lane presented the proclamation from the mayor's office proclaiming the day in honor of London Bridge Rotary Club and said a few words. And our aquatics supervisor, Swan Cook, also spoke on behalf of the program, thanking the London Bridge Rotary Club for their donations over the last 25 years, which totaled $200,000 over the last 25 years in donations. It's a very unique partnership that consists of Lake Havasu City providing the instructors and the facility for the Kinderswim Program, the Lake Havasu Unified School District providing the transportation for the students, and of course, the London Bridge Rotary Club, who generously, generously sponsors the program. A thank you to Swan Cook and to your team, Lake Havasu Unified School District and the Rotary Club, London Bridge Rotary Club, for all your efforts in keeping this going 25 years later. What an accomplishment. Mayor, you celebrated Cancer Survivors Day on June 1st with our Cancer Association here in Lake Havasu and proclaimed that day in their honor. Of course, they've done so many wonderful things for our community and in support of our residents in need. And Councilmember Nancy Campbell, Chief Troy Sterling, and myself, we attended the Elks Flag Day Ceremony that took place on Sunday, of course, in advance of Flag Day, which is officially on Friday, June 14th. The ceremony, as always, was fantastic, so thank you for that. A reminder, it's a picture that gets a lot of views online. We seem to be very proud of that in the picture, but a lot of hard work and effort goes just to get that reg monster out of that lift station. But this is a reminder to all those residents that in Lake Havasu City, please help us protect our water and sewer system from clogs. I do not use what's called and marketed as flushable wipes. They're going to cause severe damage not only to your pipes within your household, but throughout our system. Please only flush your toilet paper. That's the only thing that's designed to break down properly. Everything else belongs in the trash if you do have to use other products. This picture reflects accumulation of disposable wipes being pulled from our sewer system. Just because it goes, can go down the toilet, does not mean it should go down the toilet. If we work together reducing clogs like this, we can prevent our cost repairs to the system and allow us to have a much more efficient system. So please do not flush, flushable wipes, they are not flushable. And finally, we have some full-time and part-time positions here at Lake Havasu City. So please visit our website for more information about positions that are available and if you, and then visit the website if you want to, if you're thinking about joining the city team. So Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. We have 7.1, which is Adopt Resolution Number 24-3754, adopting the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Years 2025 through 2029. Good evening, Ms. Olson.
Good evening and thank you. This evening, we are presenting to council the resolution that would adopt the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Since our May Budget Work Session, we have had no changes to this CIP plan. The Five-Year CIP, ah, can't talk. That's what I get for following that whole ragged item. I think you set that up, Jessica. Anyway, the Five-Year CIP Plan totals $332 million, but we wanted to be sure and note that almost $221 million of that is grant funding. For the current fiscal, or for the proposed fiscal year, the total for the CIP is almost $62 million with almost $21 million in grant funding for those projects. And all of the projects in the Five-Year CIP Plan are fully funded. This is just a summary of the projects kind of by category, so you can see some of the major projects that will be occurring through fiscal year 24-25. So after July 1st, a lot of these will begin. Some of them are carryforwards and because some of our projects do go over multiple years. So we have several airport projects, mini drainage projects. In general government, the Downtown Catalyst Project, which is what Mr. Foggin had just presented and discussed, and again, the Island Path Grand Island Repave, that cut-through will be in the 24-25 budget. And as he mentioned, that city fuel facility and hopefully covered parking here for the courthouse, we will begin the process of building Fire Station 7, going through design and then building that. And then, as he showed in his presentation, Mr. Foggin showed the PD facility rehab, and then we have the rear parking lot rehab and expansion. For parks, we will, we're hoping to do shoreline improvements in the Site 6 fishing dock, and then there are several street projects as well. And as you can see from this list, there are many wastewater projects and many water projects. And attached to the council communication was a summary of all of the CIP projects and they are listed in detail in the CIP workbook that we initially presented to council. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for council's questions and discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there questions or comments from members of the council or Ms. Olson on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I just want to clarify something that somebody had, a few people brought to my attention. The concern is that the city's spending up to $10 million on a parking garage downtown. I just want to let everyone know that's not, it's not in this budget, it's not in the five-year budget. It was just something that was brought up at a council meeting, but I know the newspaper had a good discussion about it, but I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention that that's not in the city budget and it's not something we are approving because there was some great concern that we were wasting that much money on a parking structure. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Any motion? Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3754, adopting the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2029.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we are ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Move on to item 7.2, which is Adopt Resolution Number 24-3755, adopting the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Tentative Budget. Ms. Olson?
Thank you again, Mayor. The item before you now is the Tentative Budget Adoption. This tentative budget sets the maximum amount that we are allowed to spend in the FY '25 fiscal year. So we can change within that budget, we can move money around, but we will not be able to spend more money than what's been allocated with this tentative budget adoption. This tentative budget has a total of over $257 million for the FY '24-25 budget. Again, this sets the cap that the state law requires and no changes have been made to the tentative budget since the May Proposed Budget Session. Some of the items we wanted to highlight during this discussion for the tentative budget, the property tax rate does remain unchanged, the rate remains unchanged. The property tax levy will go up a little bit, about 4.7% due to the increase in assessed valuation that the county assessor places on each property. They apply that to our tax rate and that determines what your tax bill is. But we did not raise the rate and the portion that will increase associated with the AV increase, assessed value increase, is a little over $301,000, but new construction of about $105,000 is also included in that increase. We've included park amenities of $500,000. We, you had included that in the prior year budget and again, with council request, we have included it again in this budget. And one of our larger projects that we'll be working on is the replacement of the computer-aided dispatch system, so the CAD system over in the police department, which operates our entire emergency medical or our emergency services system. That's a huge project that'll involve the Information Technology Department and the police department. We'll have a lot of time to spend on that project. Infrastructure and capital maintenance, there are several items in the budget to help improve in our city infrastructure. We do have deferred maintenance that we talked to council about on occasion. It's a critical issue that we have increased funding for. It's a critical issue that we have increased funding for. That would include the city facilities, all of the various city facilities, IT security, vehicle and equipment replacements, items such as that. And finally, the classification and compensation study is in this, included in this budget, so that study will, is planned to be conducted during this next fiscal year. For the tentative budget adoption, just a reminder that what makes it up, we are very conservative in our revenue projections, we as staff. We are very responsibly managing the expenditure side. Staff is diligent in monitoring those so that we utilize all the city funding in efficient, in an efficient and reasonable manner. The continued funding of the annual contingency for any unanticipated expenditures that may arise during the year. The budget stabilization reserves are set at the policy levels and are included at those levels in this budget. And then the table that's on, on this slide is just a reflection to give you an idea of the amount that we budget compared to the amount that actually gets spent. So often, just because something's budgeted, if it's something we don't need, or we find that we don't need it, then we don't make that purchase. There are many factors that go into these differences, it's not just that. Carryforwards and one-time expenditures are included in those numbers, but we wanted to at least show that we do consistently spend less than what is budgeted. And this is just a sample showing the 23, 24 estimated actuals against the budget. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. So in about 10 minutes, we talked about a year's worth of work on doing the city budget. So I would like to thank you, Ms. Olson, and your team, the entire city staff for all of the work and effort that goes into this, this process. You know, this budget is something that we can be very proud of. You know, as Ms. Olson mentioned, she kind of, she showed what our expenses are going to be in our current budget year versus the budget that we budgeted. In municipal government, we're not able to spend money if we don't budget for it. So if we are anticipating a grant or something along those lines, we have to budget for it, even though we don't have confirmation that we received it at that time. So we have some of those pieces come in, but as Ms. Olson mentioned, the property tax rate remains flat again for the sixth year in a row. The budget stabilization reserve, or the BSR as we call it, sometimes is referred to as a rainy day fund. We doubled that this year so that we have enough reserves in place should something happen from an economic standpoint. We have lots of investments in roads and infrastructure. Mr. Foggan went over a lot of the projects we're doing currently or upcoming. This includes a lot of participation from the public. We've, we've been able to listen to what citizens are asking for and what they need. This budget, actually the one, the item right before this included a second pool for, for our citizens for the uses over at the Aquatic Center. It includes park amenities and park upgrades that we're hearing from users of the different amenities. If we move a fence line, or we put a pitchy mound in a certain area, or we purpose this bathroom in this certain way, from the actual users, we can really accomplish a lot of things with, with a little amount of money and make a really great impact to the users. So, you know, really excited to be able to push this budget forward. Councilmember Dolan made a great point, there's, there's lots of things that happen on social media and chatter that might be a discussion point of somebody, but not necessarily that of, of the city council or the city staff that is, is occurring. So again, thank you to Ms. Olson, led by Mr. Knudsen and the team, for all of your hard work in putting this together, and of course, my colleagues on the council for your, your great conversations that we've had over several public hearings and work sessions about the budget. It is something, again, we can all be proud of. Are there any questions or comments or thoughts, members of the council, before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a few comments, because this is my, the final budget, the eighth and final budget that, that we've had since I've been on council. As you all know, I'm leaving at the end of this year, and I just want to say thank you to the staff. This is the eighth budget that has been balanced, the eighth budget with no raising taxes. We hear all the time, cities need to live within their means, and we do. Very happy with that. And as you brought up, Mayor, I'm very happy with the fact that in the CIP, we have $2.5 million that we are setting aside for our, for our fully funded CIP for the swimming pool for our swim teams that desperately need that as we move forward, and I look forward to seeing that project go forward. But I just want to say thank you for all that you guys have done over the years with this budget and making sure that we don't raise the taxes and that we live within our means. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any additional? Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question. You brought up the pool, and I don't have the original budget book that we had in front of me. Wasn't it supposed to be in 2425? Because the one that I'm looking at says it's 2526.
Yeah, great question. Yeah, the, on our original book, Ms. Olson, the summary does have that in 24, excuse me, 2526.
Yes, 2526.
Okay.
So I, am I, am I incorrect? The last book that we had, didn't it say 2425? Has it always been 2526? Because I thought the previous one that we looked at was 2425.
It says, this is the original book that we distributed, and it says 2526.
I'm confused, I thought it was 2425.
It is, I think originally we were talking about this year, but I think making all the pieces of the puzzle fit.
When did that, I'm just curious, when did that change? I think I missed that.
Mayor, if I can, Councilmember Lynn, a lot of times with, with projects like this, it's always been identified for that. A lot of projects like this is, is a, a lot of work, a lot of effort goes into soliciting for bids and getting a contract, designing contractor under contract, and then the funds are in the budget for the year that were the, spent, but also kind of when that, when that's delivered. So we're not going to wait, you know, with council's approval, we're not waiting to start the, the project until a year from now, but we will start that project and, and over the course of the next couple of months. And, and then, you know, it's not something that we can build and be done with in, within like two months, so that, that's highlighted in that, in that area.
I'm still confused, because if it's not in the budget till 2526, how can we start it in 2425?
Because we have to get under contract. We have to solicit bids and through like all of our projects, we have to, Mr. Foggan indicated that we are going to be, we just dropped the RFQ today for the design services for the second bridge. So that is a good six, six plus weeks of, of time it takes to receive proposals. Then once we get the proposal, it'll take several weeks for us to score the proposal, then we enter into negotiations with that firm to bring him, you know, to bring him under contract, bring that contract to council, and then start all of the process it takes to get that, that ball rolling. So if council would like to look at moving projects around, we can, but we, we identify these, these projects kind of based on the dollars that we have coming in, you know, throughout the course of time. So all ears are open, and if council would like to accelerate that schedule, we can certainly take a look at that and maybe rearrange a, a project in the general fund to, to make that occur, or take a look at other options that are out there. So it's going to take six months before we can even get, get close. If we went right now, it would take us six months for us to spend a penny on this project.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Lynn? Yeah, yeah. So I, I would like that flexibility, Mr. Knudsen, to be able to move it up. You know, if you're able to, to get it out in six months and it, it all makes sense, I think that we bring it back to council for, for a timeline that moves it forward, should that make sense from a contractor standpoint and from the design build. I mean, we don't have all of those designs put together, but once they are, I would like to keep that flexibility available to do so.
Mayor, council, what I'm hearing from the, from the council, is that something that is a priority of the, of the council? And if that's the case, we will start that process and come back to council at the appropriate time to make sure that there's funding is available to, to keep that going.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is that the, is that the only project that we, that we moved like that? I, I'm just, I'm just really trying to understand.
It actually, it wasn't moved. This is, I have the original book that was given to us during the work session that was on April 11th, and it, it is in 2526.
Is, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Just to kind of clarify on this, so I mean, of course, we're not talking about, we need the $2.5 million sitting there right now to pay for the pool, but it sounds like we're probably going to need to do plans and do some things, you know, do we have money for that within this next year to, you know, keep the project moving as, as we go? And then, I mean, I'm assuming if we started construction, it probably wouldn't be till, you know, the next budget anyway, but do we have those contingencies in there so we can get plans and, and keep the project? I guess the concern is, you know, just, just that we just wait till 2025 to start doing it, but I know there's, we can also do a lot of planning on the city staff side without spending money as well, so just meant, I, I'd also like maybe see that we can at least keep the project going in that area, and the actual funding of the big project to, you know, break ground and start doing it could, would be in 2025, but that we have the, the, in the budget to be able to, you know, approve plans and start to keep the project going, so we're ready to hit the ground running in 2025.
Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, what I mean, what I'm hearing from, from council is, what's taken so long? So we'll get, we'll, we'll get to work and, and we'll start that process without, without delay.
Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, we just had this conversation a little bit ago, and I was under the assumption that we were having conversations with the school district to help facilitate this pool. We're building a park right now. We have several 17 parks in our community that need a lot of attention, and I have concerns. Everything about the budget's fantastic, I just feel that we're a little, we're just pushing too many items onto the Parks Department when our current parks are needing a lot of assistance. And I, I know we're giving them $500,000 for 17 parks. We have $500,000 a year for 17 parks to maintain and keep them moving forward, including parking lots, and I'm just going to share a little story that I had the other day. I had a lady come up to me, and she was special needs, and she said, what are you planning on doing for me? And I said, let's start with at least getting our parking lots so, without potholes and safe for you to get to the facilities. And she started to cry and made the comment, how did you know I fell in a pothole and had a coma, a concussion at the park? So again, I, I just feel that I'm a person, I've said it from day one, I'm a person that I don't build another house if I can't maintain the house I have, and I wish our current parks were being better maintained before we build a brand-new park downtown, and now we're going to build another park, another swimming pool. And I really would hope that the taxpayers that pay into their school board, school system would also assist with this, but obviously, it's on here. I'm not going to vote no on this budget, I just want to be on record that I really think the last thing we need to be talking this particular year, let's rush it through, is a swimming pool, when, you know, I, I just see so many maintenance and so many needs within our community. So I've been, that's all I need to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. So on the operating budget for parks, there's about 3.4 million in operation and maintenance, and then that additional 500,000, and then there's 562 in capital value. So there's additional things above and beyond the $500,000 for maintenance of our current park system. That doesn't include personnel or wages, that's just the operating and maintenance for our operating budget for parks and recreation. So there's, there is additional monies for maintenance, and then the $500,000 for user-generated maintenance. Those are comments brought back from users on what we can do to enhance the park. And then there's the fishing, fishing docks, the second pool and the downtown catalyst are the capital improvements for parks.
And I completely understand the importance of swimming. I love to swim, I swim every day. It's very healthy for you, it's great for you. I, I would absolutely love to see, be proud of a pool like we are this courthouse, but the conservative in me is starting to go, whoa, you know, are we going to be okay in the next 10 years? And I'm hoping that we are, but, and, you know, I would want nothing more than to see the swim team have a great pool, but I'm, I'm just hoping that we're really being careful here. And I know that the, the city's doing great, and tax dollars are coming in, and the city is healthy, and Mr. Lane, you should be really proud after the eight years, you get to walk away and know that you put, left the place in a better place than you started. So I do appreciate you for that, and I guess I'll just trust, I'll just trust the process.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Joan De Zero, Mayor and Council. I just had a, I'm just trying to sort out what I just heard. So is there 2.5 million that's in the budget for the pool, but we're not planning on spending it till 2526? And this year is going to be the RFPs and all of that with contractors, so we know what we're actually looking at for next year when we do the budget? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, currently, it's in our CIP budget, which was the first item, 7.1, and it's in the five-year plan that council did, did approve for 2.5 million for 2526. But based on the conversation that we had on this item, Mr. Knudsen and his team are going to move that up with RFPs, designs, and all of those types of things, and if it makes sense, based on all of those things, then to start that process this year. Design and all of that will start this year, but the actual construction.
Okay, will probably be next year. And then, and we can do that because it's in the budget, it doesn't go against the fact that we can't increase or anything because it's already in the CIP for that.
Correct, we will have to move things around.
Right, but it'll still be there.
Yes, and that'll, that'll come back with budget, changes that we do on, and usually midway through the budget, you know, we sometimes have to make.
Make adjustments.
So it'll come as a public hearing back to council.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, Bonnie Toy. Oh, just really weird, not really weird, just Bonnie. Having to ask this, not having to ask, but wanting to ask the question regarding how to lower the rates for the Aquatic Center during the summer vacation period for the school district, when the school district, when the kids are on summer vacation. I would just like to recommend that the Aquatic Center, once again, have summer rates for kids. And how would you get to include it into this year's budget or next year's budget? Or is it even part of the five-year capital improvement plan? Is that any kind of possibility? Basically, how does that process work? Because I do believe that your children in Lake Havasu City deserve to be able to go to a pool and swim safely and not have to be worried about, in the middle of summer, being in a hot lake. You guys have updated the air conditioning unit at the pool, shouldn't be allowed to take advantage of it, and your rates are rather high for children with parents of multiple children. So how would that process, how can we get that lower for the kids?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So that's actually during our fee schedule. So we, we do our fee schedule updates, and that's when we determine that. But as you know, Ms. Toy, there are several businesses and organizations that have sponsored free swim days, and those are available for, for our residents and the youth of our community to utilize.
But free swim days are once, maybe a week, maybe once every other week, when a business decides that they are willing to front the money to offer a free swim day. I'm talking that parents should be able to afford to send their kids to the swimming pool every single day, so the kids can exercise and not be on their social media every single day. It would give them something else to do besides being trapped into their web of social media. They could be having fun at a city-owned facility, and it would be open. And I'm not, again, I will reiterate, I am not saying make it free. Dollar days, two-dollar days for the whole summer, that's all I'm saying. How can we start that process to help the kids and the families of multiple kids so that they could afford to send them if they don't have that kind of money?
Yeah, Ms. Toy, I appreciate your steadfast commitment to this issue. We've talked about this now for maybe three years.
Yes.
You're still the only one talking about it. So when other citizens bring it forward and we can have a community conversation about it, then, then we'll, we'll be able to do that, but no one else is bringing it forward.
Okay.
So we did bring in the sponsored days as an opportunity, and that has, that has, has worked, and people take advantage of it, but it's just not something that I'm hearing wide, widespread from other citizens at this point.
Okay, so because you only hear it from me, and you don't hear it from anyone else, then you believe that I'm the only one who thinks that and who believes in that and cares about that, correct?
I have not heard from other citizens about this topic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Rick Wheeler, I'm the head coach for this Havasu Sting Race. Thank you all very much for giving me the time up here. I hope I don't blunder too much. too much. Um, what I would like to do though is I'd like to take a little quote from the fire marshal over there. Stick with it and believe in it and it'll happen. I came here a year and a half ago with my family to take over the job for the Havasu Sting Race. When I came in front of you guys before, the first thing I said to you all is water safety. Water safety first. We're a lake town. Water safety. If we have a facility, we're going to be able to, um, educate more kids, train more kids in a sense of water safety. Adults teach, uh, sorry, I'm rambling. What I've done is I've created, um, some paperwork that I'd like to share with you all, if you would. And this is kind of the vision of the Havasu Sting Race and what we see going forward with this pool. It's not about the Havasu Sting Race. It's about the community and it's about all the things. So can I?
Mr. Wheeler, if you just give it to Ms. Williams, uh, and she'll make sure it gets distributed. Thank you.
What I'd like to do, Rick, is kind of go through my bullet points of what this new pool could do for the community, if you just give me a few minutes. Um, one is, um, expanded access for groups, physical therapists, occupational therapists, special needs groups, homeschoolers to be able to go and get credit for a PE class, um, for swimming. Public safety. Two, consistent access for programs. That's the Havasu Sting Race, the high school swim team, the master swim team, which I'm still developing because we don't have pool for, uh, to be able to do that right now for the adult, uh, lap swimmers who want to compete. Water polo as well. We like try to bring that in. There's so many opportunities. More exercise classes, lap swimmers, city programs, school programs, and all these obviously have definitions down as far as what we're thinking. Um, the broad community benefit to that, um, an additional new pool is not just advantage and advantageous to swim teams and lap swimmers. It will serve a wide range of right of community members. This ensures that our aquatic facilities meet the needs of all users, provided equitable access to swimming and exercise opportunities year round. The benefits of a new pool, supervised environment, educational programs, structured activities, physical and mental health benefits, consistent access. Okay. The community benefits of a new pool. I highlighted this because I want to read this to you all. Okay. This is my heart and soul right here. School programs. Year-round pool access for all schools in Havasu. Working with the school system and the schools to be able to have, put up a comprehensive three-month swim program from first grade to 12th grade and make that a mandatory. Like I told you before, I lived in Asia and we had pre-kindergarten kids in the pool, just as a welcome to the pool. This is a life-saving situation. This is life-saving, this part right here. The earlier we can get them into the water just to be comfortable and/or know what they're doing, the better we're going to be. Okay. And the next is a learn-to-swim program, continuous swim lessons for all age groups funded through grants and donations. Again, year-round, I love Kinder Swim. It's great. It's three months because we don't have access to more pool space. Let's give more pool space. We can do a bigger Kinder Swim. CPR and water safety. Offering CPR classes for adults and water safety awareness programs to enhance community preparedness. That's a big one. How many of you know how to do CPR? Right? Okay, good. A lot of people outside really probably don't. And again, couldn't we find a way to educate the parents? There's a lot of kids that I know that, that, that don't do swim lessons or never done swim lessons because the parents don't know how. Okay? I want to open that up. I want to teach parents how to be safe in the water. Um, and then again, adult swim lessons, providing opportunities for adults to learn to swim, promoting safety and fitness. Community activity. This one here, you might think, whoa, how many of you have ever went to a drive-in movie? You don't have to say, I'm, I'm that old. I know what drive-in movies are. Okay? This is an opportunity for a swim-in movie nights, Friday, Saturday nights on the, um, on the scoreboard, putting up a movie and letting people come in and float around in the water on a summer night watching movies. Good community opportunity. Uh, birthday parties. Uh, I think the, the pool already does that. Last but not least are the health and wellness, the child obesity, safe, safest sport for injuries, um, outdoor activities. Employment and development, job opportunities. Create more jobs for the youth of today with lifeguards, swim instructors, and it benefits our local community. So in conclusion, I want to thank you guys for your time to let me sit up here and ramble in front of you. Uh, I, we just bought a house here in Havasu, so I'm not going anywhere. So you guys will be seeing a lot of me and I really do appreciate the time you let me have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
My name's Jennifer Blair. Um, I am the president of Havasu Sting Race, but besides that, I am going to be one of your new nurse practitioners, uh, in about the next three weeks. Um, I, uh, want to give you information, not from the sting race standpoint, but from a health and wellness standpoint as well. I refer people to the yoga programs that they do, um, at the aquatic center, the water aerobics, um, all of those things that are low-impact exercises for our adults in the community. And I appreciate that you guys have even considered, uh, expanding the pool facilities, um, and expanding the parks. Um, we talk about childhood obesity, um, the rates of diabetes skyrocketing, um, the rates of, uh, drownings going up. And we live in a lake town. We need all of those things. Um, I can't tell you how many, um, adults that I've heard cannot swim. And if we can implement an adult swim program, which I used to teach in East Los Angeles, California, um, I was a water safety instructor for seven years. Um, we would like to re-implement that. Um, water safety for adults is just as important as children. We have people drinking in the channel and drowning every day of the summer. Um, not every day, but of the summer, but I exaggerate. I apologize. But, um, it, it does happen. And those people, if they had, um, better ability to keep themselves safe, um, because of programs that we can incorporate with more pool space, um, that would be great. But I do, um, appreciate all of your time, um, and all of your effort in this adventure, um, that we're about to embark on. And I thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Say my name?
Yeah, please.
Sorry, I'm nervous.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Kelly Bennett. Um, I was, um, asked today to come down and address this. Um, tried to find somebody else to do it in our clinic, but, um, I, I was happy to follow you because, um, I'm coming to talk in that aspect also, is that I've, um, had the opportunity to see the benefits for, um, not just directly physical therapy, aquatic therapy, um, but so many opportunities that the, um, uh, that the aquatic center, um, makes available. But the availability and the access is, um, seems to be an issue. Um, I have, uh, also seen the benefits from not just physical therapy, but, um, all aspects of people in the community getting back into the community by being able to, um, take advantage of the type of activities. And it's unique. Although we have a lake, um, although many people have pools, not everybody has, um, the ability to have access to a community pool. Um, and we had aquatic, uh, therapy at one time. And, um, that was probably, um, the availability and the access. And people still ask, call us, who does it? Um, so from the health and wellness, um, aspect and just seeing people go from not being able to do the simplest things to be able to, um, get back into the community and get back to the community, is something that when it was brought up to me today, I thought, well, um, maybe that will be something that, um, will help as far as, uh, a side of it to think about. Uh, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Beat you.
Hi, I'm Deborah Miller. Um, I'm a business owner in town, but also a parent and have utilized our, I'm actually here just more as a community member. I have nothing to gain other than as a community member. Um, I have utilized our current pool in almost every aspect that we've heard, from clubs to swim team to swim lessons to red car cross to CPR, to being a lifeguard, to being a triathlete, to being on lap swim, to going to your, um, yoga, to your water, you know, aerobics, all of those things. Um, and they, I understand, um, Ms. Campbell, I understand the school aspect of it and partnering with that. But there are so many other demographics that are served by a community pool. But we do have 17 parks and we only have one pool. Our census reports show that our numbers are increasing, not just in year-round, um, people that live here, but also in our visitors. So those, um, geriatric populations, those retired populations, um, that get injured or whatnot, even the youth that get injured. My son plays competitive soccer and the first thing that the doctors in Vegas said was, do you have access to a pool? You can do no weight bearing, but you need to keep your muscles strong for running. So thank goodness we are fortunate. We have a pool in our backyard. He was able to continue running and sprinting within water. But if we had those, um, accessibility to, um, a physical therapy facility that utilized the pool, um, and had time, that would have been a much easier task than him getting in our freezing cold pool, pool at home, um, although I'm sure the water helped. So I just really wanted to come up and talk to you about that. I've also been on the American Red Cross, the interviewing that went on for our underserved demographics that just went on. And I saw Swan in the room, but I wanted to know if there was an outcome to that. Like, I was in there for almost an hour answering questions on, you know, who can afford it? Who can't afford it? What have I seen in all my years on boards and, um, and committees, um, working with the school district as a volunteer, working on independent club activities, things of that nature? And I was wondering if we had any answers to that.
No, we don't have an answer now, but we can get you an answer. So.
Okay.
So yeah, we'll follow up with you and get you some answers on, on the outcome of that.
Okay. Just because I know that there's the Native American population and, you know, the Hispanic American, you know, just our, um, our, the socioeconomic classes that can't typically, you know, are we helping them? Are we helping our disabled community and things of that nature? So, but I just feel that this project would be very beneficial to our community. And, um, even with, uh, I tried to get realtors and developers to come today. They were all busy, but they all believed that that would be a huge incentive as well. Um, so I did ask a couple of them to write to the council, um, in an email, what their thoughts were, you know, as they develop, you know, over by the marina and, um, out, you know, south side and, you know, as we redo multiple other things in the community as well. I mean, I think our parks should be beautiful, but I think lives are more important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, my name is Travis Vessels. I'm a 21-year resident of this fine, uh, city. Raised two daughters here, my youngest being 16, going into her junior year. Uh, she's a varsity swimmer. She's been on the Havasu Sting Race now for 10 years. So I'm kind of an OG when it comes to being a parent of the swim team. I've logged thousands of miles traveling this, this great state, going to different swimming pools. Um, I thought I was coming here for a debate, uh, tonight, but I guess that's not the case. So I just want to say thank you guys on behalf of the Sting Race because it means a lot to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council?
My name is Taylor Newman. Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, I do appreciate Councilmember Nancy Campbell's, uh, concern over the expansion of parks while keeping the ability to maintain them. Um, more spending is always better and proceeding with caution would be the best policy. Um, but at the same breath, I do like to see that we are maintaining our roads. So the roadwork that is, uh, I really do appreciate that as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kelsey Dill and I'm a kindergarten teacher in town for 12 years now. So for all 12 years, I've been able to take my students for the Kinder Swim Program. And it is completely beneficial. So the, um, opportunity for another pool, I think, will be really awesome because one concern that I have heard from parents is the separation of the community while the kindergartners are there changing and doing part of that program. So this would, um, fix some of those concerns and it would give a little bit of a separation from our awesome Kinder Swim Program while also, um, keeping the facility opening, open so they can continue doing their regular programs. So I think it'll be a really good opportunity. And it's amazing to see how many kids are scared around water, even after years doing that program. So if we were able to expand the programs offered for ages, I think that it would be a huge benefit for our community, giving them that opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Victoria Reeves and I am, um, a business owner here in town, but I am also the assistant coach for the Havasu Sting Race swim team. And, um, my daughter has been, uh, on the swim team since she was seven. She would have been here tonight, but she is actually taking the junior lifeguard program and it's their first evening and she didn't want to miss it. So, um, on behalf of all of the kids in this town, but not just the kids, this pool is going to be a huge community asset. I can't tell you how many parents, they come in, they bring their kids in for a tryout, and they themselves are terrified because they are not familiar with water. They're not swimmers themselves. So the need for overall water safety, for water education is huge. I totally hear you with the need for park improvement. And, um, I coached Special Olympics for years. And that being said, the occupational therapy that they benefit from being in a park, but especially in the water, is dynamic, can make a dynamic change to their life. Um, we, we can hold Special Olympics in our pool. Our pool is impacted. If you look at the schedule online, that daily schedule is back-to-back with a lap swim in the morning. We hold the second session. Our swim team takes up the second session from 7:00 to 9:00 AM. The rest of the day is literally back-to-back swimming lessons. There's very little time in there for anything outside of what they already have booked. If we had a second pool, you could have a, a possibly a lower cost free swim time going on for the outside community that wants to come in and just have some playtime in the pool. There are so many different things. So we really, really appreciate you guys putting this in the budget, moving it forward, and hopefully starting it sooner rather than later would be fantastic. But overall, we really, really appreciate it. We're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on our whole budget? Yeah, 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 on our whole budget. Yeah. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and, uh, bring it, uh, back to, uh, council for any additional comments, questions, um, or possible motion? Mr. Mayor?
I don't want to do it.
Hey, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, you mind?
And yes, are you?
Just a comment.
Okay.
No, I, I just want to comment that, uh, this is kind of the beautiful part about our count, this council and our city and what it's all about. Uh, because everyone wants to pit, you know, roads versus pool versus maintaining our parks. And it's not like we have to do one or the other. Um, we, we can accomplish all of our goals. And, um, and as long as we're all willing to give and take a little bit, we can, we can figure out something. That, that's kind of the Havasu way. We've always kind of figured out a way to, to, to be everything for everyone and, and, and to do a little bit and help out wherever we can. Um, you know, we, we talk about being physically responsible. Well, we did. We, we increased our savings account in case we have an economic downturn. We, uh, we talked about maintaining what we have. We increased, um, we increased our overall budget for maintaining what we have, including an additional 500,000 for, uh, just little tweaks here and there to make everything. to make everything a little more user-friendly. We talked tonight about, you know, Councilwoman Lynn talked about moving that up. And everyone just sounds like they're definitely behind that, getting the pool going sooner rather than later. So it was just a beautiful... I think it was a beautiful experience, beautiful night. I appreciate everyone coming. It's how the process should work and I appreciate everyone.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Moses. Councilmember Dolan?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to you guys coming out. Sometimes we get the same people in the room and it's nice seeing new people and expressing, you know, concerns and what we should be doing. And I... We live in a great, amazing recreational community and outdoors is an amazing thing here. And we do have some great parks. And, you know, there's a lot of people, "Why do we have the parks? I don't go there. I don't do that." You know, I mean, there are other communities that don't spend, you know, prioritize parks and things like that. And Havasu is one of them. And I think we're lucky to live in those, in that community. I think we definitely need to take care of the kids, things for the kids to do. I'd just say, you know, this courthouse has been one of my proudest accomplishments, being on council in the last six years. The CON tonight is probably tied up there with number one. And I think this pool is definitely going to be tied up there with number one as well. I mean, I was born and raised here in Lake Havasu and we didn't get the pool till I was closer to high school age. And I really wish we did have it. And I think it's... I thank you guys for coming out, for your passion and for, you know, fighting for what the kids need, and I think it's great. And, you know, we do have some... We have a lot of amazing parks. Yeah, we do have... There's a lot of stories. We do have some things we need to work on. We also have a new Parks Director that we're going to be getting and we're going to be looking at those things. And, you know, we have been... This council has worked really hard to, you know, improve some of the things that we've let go over the years. And I think we'll deal with those as they come forward as well. And like I said, we are fiscally conservative in what we're doing and, you know, keep bringing those to our attention. You know, the squeaky wheel does get the oil, so... But we have to know about them, you know. And there's, like I said, there's a lot of things we can do. There's a lot of things that the Rotary Clubs, you know, Kinder Swim and such like that have filled that void over the years. And there's a lot of clubs that still do those kind of things. And so Havasu is just a great community for this. So I just want to just thank you guys for coming out and we do hear you. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Dolan? Councilmember Lane?
I was just going to make a motion.
Yeah, all three of you.
Everybody done?
All three of you at once, I was like, "All right, then, let's get through this." Are there any other comments or from members of the council? All right, then, Councilmember Lane, if you want to make a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3755, adopting the fiscal year 2425 tentative budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is adopt ordinance Number 24-1334, amending City Code Chapter 10.16, Display of Vehicles for Sale, Article 3, Vehicles for Sale on Public Property, to prohibit the sale of vehicles on all city-owned controlled property. Ms. Gary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was considered and introduced by the city council two meetings ago. As we discussed, the city council in 2007 adopted a city code to regulate the display of vehicles along the Highway 95 corridor. This was very successful. Recently, we've had difficulties with persons parking vehicles on other city properties, such as the parking lot at McCulloch Boulevard and Beach Comer Boulevard on the island. This is causing issues with other people wanting to park because it's too full with items for sale. And so this is a proposed ordinance that would prohibit the parking of vehicles for the primary purpose of advertising the vehicle for sale on city-owned or city-controlled property. In researching the item, we found that there were many other municipalities that had such a code. And so city staff recommends adopting the proposed ordinance and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Are there questions for Ms. Gary on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Ms. Gary had mentioned this already, but in our last public hearing on this particular item when we introduced it, we had some questions about if you have your car for sale and you drive it to a city park to use, totally fine. It's just parking your car there to try and use it as a car lot to sell it there. That's what would be prohibited. And again, we do have a similar ordinance for the 95 corridor and it's worked out fantastic, so... Mayor? Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Motion?
Please.
Yeah, I move to adopt ordinance Number 24-1334, amending Chapter 10.16, Article 3, Vehicles for Sale on City Property.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.4 is adopt ordinance Number 24-1335, approving a rezone of 2305 Victoria Farms Road, APN 120-03-046, a 10-acre meets and bounds parcel from light industrial district to industrial district. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. If I may note at first that the applicants are out of state, but they will be appearing remotely as soon as they get brought up on the screen. But I'll go ahead and start with the staff report. The subject property is located at 2305 Victoria Farms Road and accessed through an easement from Victoria Farms Road itself through the neighboring property. And that is right where I'm showing the arrow here. The parcel is approximately 10 acres in size. And let's see, here we go, the entirety of it. And was rezoned in 2020 to LI Light Industrial to permit Mr. Wild to conduct certain activities that fall under the category of heavy industry, which is only permitted in the I industrial district for which Mr. Wild has filed this new application. Zoning on the property is light industrial LI, with all surrounding zoning being either light industrial LI or industrial I. And the I is the gray. The light industrial in different versions is all the orange you see on there. The general plan map shows the entire area as employment and is consistent with the proposed zoning. Mr. Mayor, based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of this application. The Planning Commission did recommend approval, seven to zero, on May 15, 2024. And the applicant should be available remotely.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Gilbert or for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. We do see the applicants, is it Mr. and Mrs. Wild on the screen? Do you have any comments you would like to make? You don't have to, but I just wanted to offer that opportunity if you wanted to.
No.
No.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for being here. All right, any questions or comments for members of the council? Or entertain a motion? Yes, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, motion?
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance Number 24-1335, approving a rezone of 2305 Victoria Farms Road, APN 120-03-046, a 10-acre meets and bounds parcel from the light industrial district to industrial district.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 7.5, adopt Resolution Number 24-3751, approving a minor general plan amendment revising the future land use map designations for 2778 and 2786 McCulloch Boulevard North, Track 121, Block 10, Lots 2 and 3, containing .57 acres from low-density residential to high-density residential. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The applicant is present in the audience. This is the land use component of two hearings today on this item. And the rezoning component will be the second. The subject properties are 2778 and 2786 McCulloch Boulevard North and comprise approximately 2/3 of an acre in total. The applicant intends to construct nine new dwelling units. The subject properties are shown on the low... as low-density residential land use category on the general plan map that permits four to six units per acre and is compatible with part of the surrounding area. And I'll get to that in a minute when we get to zoning map become more apparent. However, it does not match the overlying zoning of R3 and the remainder of the area shown on the zoning map that permits four to 10 units per acre. The applicant is requesting high-density residential, which would be compatible with the R3 zoning that's already in place. Approving this amendment will clean up a discrepancy between the land use map and existing zoning. Staff plans to address the larger issue of these major areas being in conflict with zoning all across the city with the upcoming general plan update due in 2026. The zoning on the property, a lot of the surrounding parcels to the north, east, and west is R3 limited multiple-family residential, which is not consistent with the underlying land use category. And I'm going to go ahead and slide it back to the land use plan. You can see it's all yellow for low-density residential. When you look to zoning, there's a lot of orange, which is for the R3. To the south is R1 low-density residential. As the applicant is requesting to add a PD rezon to the R3 zoning to permit a higher unit density, the underlying land use is required to be amended to be consistent with the zoning. Mr. Mayor, based on the findings, the Development Review Committee does recommend approval of this application. The Planning Commission recommends approval, seven to zero, on May 15, 2024. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Are there any questions, members of the council, for Mr. Gilbert or the applicant?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I have a question for Mr. Gilbert. I had somebody reaching out to me and they were in the same situation. They were looking to go from a R3 to an R4. And upon further review, they were informed that it takes up to three months to get this process in place.
That is approximately correct because the neighborhood meeting has to be held and that has to be noticed. And then public hearing noticing has to be done following review by different agencies for a hearing date with the Planning Commission. And it's about a month to get to city council. So all in all, the whole process does take three to sometimes four months, depending on the scheduling and when the meetings, the dates of meetings fall on.
Okay, one more question I had, which I don't have all the information in front of me, nor that's why it's interesting that this came up today because I could kind of reference it, that I was told that it's three to four months to get from a R3 to an R4 and possibly up towards $6,000 that's non-refundable if we don't approve it up here. Is that really the process in place?
The process is currently in place. The fees are based upon a fee schedule that's approved by the council that we have to charge for applications. Zoning applications are slightly more expensive than general plan amendments, but if both are required, they do total approximately $6,000. That is accurate. Again, that's based upon a fee schedule that's adopted by the council.
And when you said that general plan change, you still have to do the rezone and a plan, a general plan change, I mean, like a PD over the top of that, which would be expedited? Are both the same process, about the same?
That's correct. Going from an R3 to an R3 PD is a zoning change. And in order for a zoning change to occur, it has to be consistent with the general plan's land use category that underlies it. And that's where, if I were to be blunt, probably when the 2016 general plan was produced, that it and the zoning map at the time should have been modified to be more consistent with each other, so this would not be a big situation. It's coming up a lot recently and we have no choice but to require that the general plan be updated before we can recommend approval of a rezone.
Okay, I just, you know, we talk about how we're making it easier for developers and how we're, you know, taking something as simple as an R3 to an R4 and how I'm hearing that the process is the farthest thing from simple and it's very expensive and it's extremely risky for us. So I just wanted... It was just perfect timing. I wanted to ask him questions in a public forum so that we all are aware. I don't... I wasn't aware of this until this was brought to my attention today, but this doesn't seem... It's very concerning to see this because, like you said, everybody around this is already in that zone. I wish there was something more we can do. But I guess you guys have all heard me. I had my concerns with that and we'll move on. Thank you so much for answering those questions, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Councilmember Campbell, there is something we can do, I think, just based on this process and also when we go through the next general plan process, we make sure that it's addressed in that fashion so that it doesn't have to occur if that's the will of the council, which I imagine would be a discussion for sure. So we definitely can address that. Are there any other questions or comments for members of the council for Mr. Gilbert or the applicant? Does the applicant have anything that they would like to mention or...? Nope? Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Hey, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
Get it? Mayor?
You can do it.
Motion? I move to adopt Resolution 24-3751, approving a minor general plan amendment revising the future land use map designations for 2778 and 2786 McCulloch Boulevard North, Track 121, Block 10, Lots 2 and 3, from low-density residential to high-density residential.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.6 is adopt ordinance Number 24-1336, approving a general development plan and planned development rezon for 2778 and 2786 McCulloch Boulevard North, Track 121, Block 10, Lots 2 and 3, .57 acres from limited multi-family R3 district to limited multi-family planned development R3 PD district to allow nine dwelling units across the two lots. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is the second hearing on the same item that was just covered and the applicant is out in the audience. Regarding the previous discussion we had, staff will work diligently with, during the general plan update process to... with the... and also with the consultant to make sure that the maps are accurate, that they accurately reflect development patterns and what the future that the city wants to present is reflected on them so we don't have big areas that are mismatched like we have today. We work diligently, see that that's done. This is the rezoning component to hearings. Stay on this item. The subject properties are located at 2778 and 2786 McCulloch Boulevard North and comprise approximately 2/3 of an acre in total. The subject properties are shown as low-density residential land use category, which is not compatible with the overlying R3 zoning already in place and was approved by the city council in the previous hearing today to change the land use map to reflect high-density residential. The zoning on the property is R3 limited multiple-family residential, which is not compatible with the underlying land use category but will become compatible following city council approval of the general plan amendment in the previous hearing today. Most of the surrounding parcels to the north, east, and west are R3 limited multiple-family residential and to the south is R1 low-density residential. The applicant is requesting to add a PD rezon to the existing R3 zoning to permit a higher unit density on the two subject properties of 16 units per acre where the underlying zoning only permits a maximum of 10 units per acre. The general development plan intends for a total of nine individual single-story dwelling units across both lots combined with attached garages and meets the current multi-family parking requirements that were adopted last year. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of this application with the following conditions. Condition one, the minor general plan amendment recommended for approval by the Planning Commission as Land Use Action 24-4262 is approved by the city council. Condition two, the development of the property shall substantially match the general development plan provided with this request. Condition number three, combine lots 2 and 3 into one parcel through the city process for lot combinations prior to applying for a building permit. And finally, condition four, building permits and design review for compliance with city codes are required prior to development of the property. The Planning Commission recommended approval, seven to zero, on May 15, 2024. Mr. Mayor, that completes my staff report. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Are there any questions for members of the council for Mr. Gilbert or the applicant? I do have a question for the applicant. I do have a question for the applicant. It's more out of curiosity. What is the intended use? Are these going to be for sale or for, for lease?
Both.
Okay. So, there'll be a condominium, plant laid on top of it and then you'll?
Well, no, I'm, I'm gonna do the whole condominium project, but I like to keep some for me.
Okay.
For rental.
Gotcha. Very good. Yeah, you, you've built a few others in, in the area and those were for, for rental. So, I was just more curious.
I'm just gonna sell as many as I need to pay the loan, then I'll keep the rest.
Okay. Very, very nice. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
How many months did it take to get to this process?
This process?
Yeah.
A couple of months?
Two.
A little over, three months?
Yeah.
Two, three months.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm what I was saying to just make sure that we're.
No, you were right.
It's pretty expensive too. But, you gotta do what we gotta do.
When you come to, from California, it's not that bad.
Okay, there you go. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Excellent. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ortiz. We appreciate it. All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
For this project, is it just for these two parcels of land?
Yes.
For the entirety of Havasu?
No, no, no. Yeah, just these two particular lots, the applicant owns.
I'm just thinking about the dynamic of Havasu and how like we have a certain way that it looks and, you know, cautioning against doing more of this to refer from looking more like Southern California, more towards like LA, like those kind of areas, right? So, that's my only concern at all.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And sir, could you just state your name? We're on a different public hearing. Somebody did that.
Sorry, my name, my name is Taylor, Taylor Newman.
Thank you.
I agree with you. And one of the first questions I asked a few of the high densities like this, what are your setbacks? You know, again, it's a condominium complex and again, we're not going two stories up blocking. So, I totally agree with you. This is not something I want this whole city to be like me personally, but there are certain little avenues, departments, I mean, communities that this works and fits in, but I'm always asking, you're covering all the setbacks, right? You're, you know, because I don't want you to be California at all and I am definitely not a three foot setback. I don't like any of that. But, some of these communities that are condominium kind of communities, that makes more sense.
Yeah, understood.
But, I'm, I'm listening to you. Thanks.
So much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt ordinance number 24-1336 approving a general development plan and planned development rezone for 2778 and 2786 McCulloch Boulevard North, tract 121, block 10, lots 2 and 3, containing 0.57 acres from limited multifamily R3 district to limited multifamily planned development R3 slash PD district to allow nine dwelling units across the two lots with the following conditions. I memorized all this, folks. A minor general plan amendment recommended for approval by the Planning Commission as land use action 24-4262 is approved by the city council. The development of the property shall substantially match the general development plan provided with the request. Combine lots 2 and 3 into one parcel through the city process for lot combinations prior to applying for a building permit and building permits and design review for compliance with city codes are required prior to the development of the properties.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.7 is approve the purchase of two utility task vehicles from Anderson Powersports LLC, DBA Anderson AZ West. Chief Sterling.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Who's ready for a swim? We talked about a lot of pools tonight. Tonight, I'm here to ask for your approval to purchase two UTV vehicles from Anderson Powersports LLC, DBA Anderson AZ West. We, as a police department, were awarded a grant from the Arizona State Parks Off-Highway Vehicle Supplemental Grant Program this past year for us to purchase two UTVs that'll outfit our fleet that is used to patrol our desert areas, our shoreline beaches, those type of things. We also utilize those vehicles to assist in community cleanup efforts with different clubs to help keep our deserts clean as well. So, this is exciting to be able to get a, a grant for this type of purchase. The solicitation for formal bids went out and we did receive three bids. Of the three bids, Anderson was the lowest bid by a large margin. And once we do actually purchase and place these vehicles into service, there's a component of the grant that has us do public service announcements to provide public education on the proper use of public lands. So, another key piece to that. The funds in the amount of $82,996 are available in our grant funding and are being carried forward into the 2425 budget for purchase. The additional balance of $2,063.70 is included in our fiscal year 2425 budget in the general fund, which is essentially a little more than the grant could cover, but we're able to cover that in our general fund. So, tonight I'm asking for approval to make this purchase. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Sterling. Are there questions or comments, members of the council?
I have a comment.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I am so thrilled to see that our local Anderson group came in so much lower and that we're finally being able to purchase some of our vehicles in town. And as we know, the Andersons give back to the community. It's a win-win for everybody. Thank you for getting the grant. Thank you for all you're doing.
Awesome. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Do we have to purchase any added equipment to put on these vehicles or is this a complete cost for them?
These are fully outfitted.
Right. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
David Diaz, I think it's great they're getting them from local too, but what, what are, what are you buying? Can Am's, Polaris, Razor? Just wondering what it is.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So, actually, the model is a 2024 or newer Polaris Ranger Crew XP 1000 North Star Edition.
Thank you. Would anyone else just like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, I moved, motion. I move to approve the purchase of two utility task vehicles from Anderson Powersports LLC, DBA Anderson AZ West for $81,059.70, the calculated total with the addition of a 4.9% change order for verified freight charges of $4,000 under the city manager's authority for the total of $85,059.70.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearings, but item eight is our call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. These are items that would not be on the agenda. Your comments are limited to three minutes or less. There is a timer box on each of the screens around the room. The council, because these items wouldn't be on the agenda, we're not able to respond, but we can respond to any criticism that may come our way. With that being said, you don't have to sign up for Call to Public. We didn't have anyone sign up for Call to Public, but if you'd like to address the council during Call to Public, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hey, it's Bonnie Toy. So, I decided to do something off the wall today, maybe not off the wall, but I walked from my house all the way up here to the courthouse. I left my house at like 10 minutes to four because of how far I live away from the courthouse. It's like a mile and a half or something. I don't know what I was thinking. Actually, I was thinking that I just really wanted to know what it'd be like to walk from my house to the courthouse. Granted, I use my hiking poles because it's hard to walk when you're not able to walk very well. Do you know that you guys had a couple of years ago made Mulberry, uh, not Mulberry, what is that? Swanson. Supposed to have all this beautiful stuff to make it pedestrian friendly. I walked out a thing from, I want to say, wherever that wash is, the tonneau wash or the Mulberry wash? I don't know which one it is. But, I walked from all the way up Swanson, there was no place for me to sit down. And I had to stop at, eventually I stopped on Tacoma and Swanson. Do you know, I think everybody's dog pisses on the stop sign right there because that was the only place for me to sit down to take a drink of water. And when I stood up, all I could smell was dog piss. And I was like, really? I know that through the last couple, the last month or whatever, that governor made some declarations about heat emergencies and heat extremes or whatever. Lake Havasu is not really prepared to deal with cooling stations or helping people stay cool. Just wanted to tell you, those three story condos over on Swanson and right by the tonneau wa, whatever wash that is, I really appreciate those things today because when I was walking up, they were the only spot where there was shade because they're three stories high, they shaded the sidewalk. I was able to sit down there and not get burnt like I did on Tacoma and Swanson. Anyway, I really think that as a city council, you guys might need to consider your ideas of what is pedestrian friendly, especially for anybody who might be handicapped. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to Public?
Good evening, council, mayor, Don Wisdom. I've been thinking about the Freedom Bridge once you cross the channel. What's, have they made a decision what they're gonna do? You've got three roads. You have the road that goes down on the west side. You have a road that goes down where the, the homes are. Then you have a road that goes to, along the channel. Then you have a road that goes back to the Atlanta Bridge Road. And plus, you have the new road coming in. I've talked to David Diaz a couple of times. He doesn't like my idea, but seems to me the, the roundabout would be the best way to handle that with no stop signs. You get on the roundabout and you keep going until you find the spot you want to go out. It would alleviate a lot of traffic. You're talking about that one area that I guess you can't park your car and sell it anymore. That might disappear when they start putting the road in. So, just a couple of things for thought. And I enjoy coming up here and talking to all these nice smiley faces, even yours, mayor.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during Call to Public?
Mark Masters from Republic Services. Good evening, mayor, council, city staff. Just wanted to let you all know that, you know, we had a pretty successful household hazardous waste day in April. Had a, had a lot of business, right? Business was good for the company we brought in, so good that they ran out of space to take it all. So, through talking to city manager and, and the fire chief, we collaborated another event, kind of a makeup day. And that day is confirmed for June 29th of this year. So, we're really proud to offer that. It's a, it's a pretty expensive thing and we're glad to help partner with the city to offer that. The main thing I'd ask of everybody is, is just let's get the communication out, right? Because this is going to be kind of an off cycled one. The people that are going to do it is, they're bringing enough trailers to double the, the intake. So, past, we've had to cut it off at like 9:30, 10 o'clock because we'd ran out of room and, and it was like a rock concert out there and everybody was trying to get in and it was pretty hectic. So, so we're making the commitment that if you're there between 8:00 AM and 12:00 AM, you'll get taken care of. So, I think this is a real big win for the city. It's a real big win for the community for, for some good cleanup that's well needed and we're glad to be a part of it. So, if I could just ask, just to get the message out, social media, maybe a, a news article to talk about what we can take, what we can't take, who can do it, who can't. We did have a lot of commercial businesses try to kind of rain on our parade a little bit and bring pick up loads of stuff in. So, we just want to educate the customers, educate the community, but we're really proud of this. So, hopefully we'll see everybody June 29th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your partnership.
Mr. Mayor, where is it gonna be?
Fire station two. Fire station two on Kiowa.
Of Kiowa? Yeah.
Yes. All right. Would anyone else like to address the city council at Call to the Public? All right, seeing now we'll close the Call to the Public. Item nine, our current events. Are there any council committee reports? All right, item 10, our future meetings. On Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, 5:30 PM, there'll be a regular meeting. That also will be our budget adoption meeting. And then Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, 5:30 PM, we'll have a regular meeting, but that'll also be our property tax levy adoption hearing. Item 11, are there any future discussion items?
Mayor, no future discussion items, but can I do an update on the candidate forum that has been merged with the real estate? No.
No. Is that?
That's for Chamber Commerce. The Chamber Commerce just informed me and there's flyers sitting out on the table. Obviously, I was like David Lane, I was checking out there a minute. There's flyers out there that's showing that the Havasu Realtors Association and Chamber Commerce is going to merge their candidate's forum on June 26th at 5:00. And so, if you're thinking that there'll be another candidate forum for the Realtors Association, there will not be another candidate forum. So, I think that's a really positive merger and I understand that the Havasu Realtors Association will also be sponsoring it and assisting with it as well. So, the good news there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sorry for being out of line.
All right. So, now we are on item 12. Motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time.